I now relinquish my powers and fall under the direction of the Parliament Portfolio Committee on Energy. If I could have our esteemed legislators kindly introduce yourselves and your constituency before you take us through this public hearing process. Tino Tenda, honorebo Musakuwa?
Tino Tenda, zitarangu ndinanzi Elaya, mwenyarazin zweregozonga Musakuwa, diri MP we begita West, diri Nango Energy and Power Development Committee.
Thank you very much, honorebos. If you can just go through the bill in English so that our listeners get to understand what it is all about, then I'll also have someone doing the Shona and then we'll ask one of the parliament clerks to help us with the Ndebele version. If we can have the English version first.
Thank you so much. The purpose of the bill is to amend the Electricity Act, Chapter 13, Section, Subsection 19, in the following clauses which are stipulated below. Clause 1 of the bill, this clause sets out the bill's short title as Electricity Amendment Bill 2022. Clause 2 is the amendment of Section 60A of Section 13, Subsection 19, obstruction and evasion of any electricity current, Section 60A. It makes it an offence to obstruct or divert electric current or knowingly to use current that has been illegally obstructed or diverted. There are amendments deleted. The first one liable to a fine not exceeding level 14 or to imprisonment for a period not exceeding five years or to both such fine and such imprisonment. And substituted by, and if there are no special circumstances peculiar to the case as provided for in Section 2A, be liable to imprisonment for a period of not less than 10 years. Comment, this clause will remove the option to pay a fine and to impose a mandatory sentence of imprisonment for a period not less than 10 years unless there are special circumstances to exempt one from this stiffer penalty. If there are special circumstances, a court will be able to impose a lesser but still swinging penalty of a fine of up to level 14, equivalent 500,000 or imprisonment for up to 10 years or both. However, it is not clear on what constitutes special circumstances, which is what the public are also supposed to give an input to. Section 60A, Subsection 2, vandalism. This clause makes it an offence to extinguish, damage or destroy electric lamp or any other apparatus provided for the convenience or safety of the public, street lamps, traffic lights, etc. These clauses proposes that anyone found guilty of this offence is liable to be sentenced to imprisonment for a period not less than 10 years. And then Section 60C, Subsection 2, importation of material used in connection with generation, transmission, distribution or supply of electricity. The clause creates several offences for drivers or persons in charge of a vehicle carrying material used for generating, transmitting or supplying electricity to fail to produce or demand a special police clearance, certificate or customs clearance documentation relating to material. The clause is liable to a fine not exceeding level 14 to imprisonment, period not exceeding five years or to both such fine and such imprisonment. And substituted, and if there are no special circumstances peculiar to the cases provided in Subsection 2A, be liable to imprisonment for a period not less than 10 years. If there are special circumstances, a court will be able to impose lesser penalty of up to level 14 or imprisonment for up to 10 years or both. So these are the major sections which are being amended in the bill in order to protect electricity infrastructure, which is inconveniencing a lot of industries, the members of the public and various activities as a result of this vandalism. So in short, that's what the bill seeks to enact.
So what are you requiring from the public, having gone through what the bill entails?
There are opinions before this parliament annexes it into law. And if there is any adjustment... Inclusions which they think are left out that we need to add and augment what has already been proposed before the bill becomes law.
Thank you very much, honorebo Musakuwa. We have another member who has just joined us, if you can introduce yourself.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tandwe Makwunike. I'm the committee clerk to the Portfolio Committee on Energy and Power Development.
Thank you very much. You will also give us the details of where the public can submit their directly to parliament, their views especially as we engage on the Electricity Amendment Bill. Let's go to Shona, the Shona version.
Kune wano, wa noti kanamuno, akai sa ma kezi ake, pampa pake, kunyangu pachitoro. Ano uya oto ra tchambo, zemoto ozi sa mbama kezi siri pa mtemo. Asina ku visacho uwi ri, chinotari sa wane urumende, chineta kuti, nikai bu dirire, jinu jana, bichende ramberi, oisa mukati mba yake. Wano iwa o, wano fana na kusungwa, shakare, pama kore, asengadareke, gumi. Saka, senku wazino, tinotari sa kuti, Moriyes Zimbabwe, mutipe ofu ngwane, sana nguzo zenu, nemono wenu kuti, mnno joona osei, nemitongo yakatagoa, mukati mebi uchi. Mnno ti kudi o naso, mnno vumena naso ere. Moriku joona osei, nde jipi shamunga, tibasi re naso se funwa. Kanafungwa izi matipa, tinondo gara, se darire para mendee. Ra gara, darire para mendee, jinu, chinotaro, pamsolo pezo aso, mtemo o gazira.
Tino Tenda, honorebo Tuuranyaray. The WhatsApp number, the WhatsApp number for the studio is 0775 897 897. The call number is 0772 162651. You can call directly on that number as soon as we open our time for contributions from you, our valued listeners. If someone can assist us with the Ndebele version, we have Mr. Ndou. He's also clerking for the Energy Committee. Thank you very much for coming through, Mr. Ndou. Thank you very much, Mr. Ndou, for that explanation. Honorebos, if you can just indulge me, the messages have started coming through. So if we can just go through them and we record them. If there is any clarification, you are free to just contribute to clarify to our valued listeners. The WhatsApp number is 0775 897 897. And you can also send your message directly to parliament, 071998121. Our call line is 0772 162651. What are your contributions on this important bill? One listener here saying, how is solar energy affected by this bill? Maybe if you can also give us your suggestion, what you should think, what you are saying about the solar energy, how should it also be included in the bill? And then another listener here, my contribution is they should specify which special circumstances will a person receive a lesser punishment. That's a contribution there. And then Brian Azisazza, good evening. Thank you so much for bringing such good amendments to protect our energy infrastructure. My question goes to transporting of materials used to generating electricity. Is generators and solars on that category? Another thing, you are repairing electricity for companies and mines, which is those big electrical materials. Where do we get the permits? So they want clarification on that, maybe if you also make your suggestion. And then... And okay, the issue of solar system, can this bill also cover the solar systems? Chadwin O'Radio, that fact is very valid. Vandalism is not good for both the nation and different sectors. This must continue to be applied even in other areas besides electricity vandalism. Those are the views that are coming through. Good evening, I think the proposed 10-year mandatory sentence for vandals is a bit lenient considering the massive negative effect as such vandalism has on the economy. I believe the sentence should be deterrent enough to send a clear message to would-be offenders. And I propose a minimum of 15 years. We have some callers coming through. Hello, you are live on Star FM?
Alan?
Yes, please go ahead, make your contribution.
Ah, na ndura kuti the contribution. Eh, ane pala taora, vachile ngena makati, mtemo urukui iska. Uno sunga, uya anenga atora ma kezi zini illegal. But I will now specify, from which point to which point, for example? Zirukuta ra after meter ere, zirukuta ra before meter ere. Was you find iseri, eh, nenya the ma clusterization arbitika. Remember yangu, I said divide, naraka ka cluster panix, noto ra ma kezi from meter, tichiti tine one meter. Zirukura ere kuti, we should have first consult ne supply authority ere, kanaku ti, we are allowed to take since, till after the billing point, which is the meter. Daraka kwanza kuti specify exactly, jaraka clear, which is manwana, wana able, mtemo juzan. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that contribution. The call line is 0772 162651. And on our WhatsApp number, 0775 897 897. Hello, you are live on Star FM for the public hearing? Hello, please go ahead. Okay, that particular number is not connected. Hello, you are live on Star FM?
Hello, you are live on Star FM?
Hello, how are you?
I'm fine, sir. Please go ahead and talk to the legislators.
Yes. Hello?
Yes, you are live, please go ahead.
Eh, Tanswa, tokutuwa pata wa nyaya ye wano, wa nova infrastructure. Bati, nyaya erugunya yakunesa, Mzimba Buende, kuti ma kezi akuna. So, apana ere amendment, inga itu e, eh, da ite bio, kana kuji. Pangali somutemo, kudi poneko, uti mari, kuti ma kezi, a improve availability electricity. Adu kwanze ere kutu fokasa onga.
Thank you for that contribution. Our legislators will respond. I will just take a number of contributions and then just before we break for the news, they will do a bit of a summary or a response to what our listeners have been raising here. That's a contribution there. Hello, you are live on Star FM? Hello? Okay, hello. The number is 0772 162651, please go ahead.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm fine, sir. Please make your contribution, go ahead.
Good, um, my contribution was, it's really noble idea, I like and support the initiative. But my concern is on the issue that when you create these deterrent measures, eventually if there's more really proper follow-up, it will end up benefiting the law enforcement agent. That's my contribution.
Thank you, sir, for that contribution, 0772 162651, that's the number to call. If you want to be heard, we are discussing the Electricity Amendment Bill with our honorebos in the studio. Hello, you are live on Star FM?
Eh, Masuera, sir.
Tasuera Masuera o, taora izenu?
Eh, ini ya, tina uvuunza oka, tine ishe kuti, ma transformer ku biwa, andidika. Kanabiwa, maybe sometimes you ask it to contribute tumo tumari, andidika, transformer yo uya. Then isesa, don't, don't, no, there is something to protect the transformer. Ay, basta ere, yesa, they go so to make sure it's protected, because they know they deka. Tinotenga transformer tisu fo, zesa to benefit also, kuti mari, roni mari from us. Yes, we are the user of power, but every day, zesa they are in business to make money out of us. Saka, I find that was what is, is it legal, able to technology, be mari, to buy transformer, transformer, ote, oyo iswa. Zesa was no, you try that order, then we get things ordered onto that would protect that, that mean. If us, zesa should also make an effort to get that, whether a minimum flat bars or treated, whatever, order, kuti, mamitma, transforming, get it, where are you? There's a due issue, there are consumers, can be basta isesa, because they know, eh, they deka. Atu, zirau ti, aruwa ere, si genuine ere, kana, zesa they are also involved, exactly. Because no, only you drive in my cables, the cable, you want, you want. But I think that this, to tell us, must be new to the, again, tisu foot. The ma keza, zesa, the charger, again, but the tisu, so don't know, zesa do, guminapapi, what if you do so as consumers?
Thank you very much. And we are going towards the news. I'll ask the honorebos just to do a short round of responses if there are any clarifications required, like this one. Avunza, Anzi, pachurungu pana, zirangu zate, much, jeans not less than 10 years. Pa Shona, pachizons, ma kora, asengafuri, gumi, not more than 10 years. Anzi, please clarify there. As you also wind up, just before we break for the news, I'll start with you, honorebo Tuuranyaray.
Masueta, zirukuta wane, shemakuwa ere, asiri pasipe gumi.
Okay.
Do atu zirukuta wane so.
All right. Pana esuere zha, muka da ku, ku clarifiers, budamuni ma contributions, afakune wano.
Regain di ti, pane wa, va ku vunza, ikos, zino, angua, zirukuta wane, chishona, zirukuti, ibasa rani, ere ku gaziri sa, ma transformer kuti asabiwe, agarere pakanaka, paka chengetezeka. Ibasare zesa, ndo inofana o gazira, isoso. Ka rekopa wa i gazira, ma transformer wa cha aturi kamdeenga, wakanga wasanga gaziri, nziira, kanauti mikana, kanaku ti ma simbi, e kuti ziriza, ku biwa ku ma transformers. Asima zo, wano yu kufamba kwenguwa, wa ku gazira, njiimbo, ma simbi kanauti ma base, katoa ti ma transformer asabiwe, njiimbo, zacha asa zanya, nyote kesera. Asina kutu zitawra, kwa kaitwa, zirukuta wra, kwa zirukaitwa, nemapa parliamentaryense. Wa ku gazira, se ziruka tuwa, kuti ita ishi, nju zenu, kuti zichengetezeka. No kuti, no rambari, ndambo zikonti, nasi kwa biwa transformer, manwana yemo yabiwa. Wano, wa no rambalu, kuti, nje, nje, nikai ramba yine, matambo ziku. Sokoo onzira, matamzige, wano, mshipata ra, mshikoro, muma bizimisi, kunyangu muzimba. Saka, we zesa, ndo wa no fana ku gazira, ma transformer au, ne ku adori za pakanaka.
Thank you very much, honorebo, honorebo Musakuwa. Just 30 seconds before...
Sure, yeah. I just want to guide the public that we need their input on how the bill should be, what has been left out and what needs to be added, any omissions or what, so that we protect electricity infrastructure. Do, 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 do you want a bill? Kutuwa, wa tauri, kutu, kuti, ibasa rani ere, mtemo, what zirira sei? Infrastructure, iwa iwa proposal, se wa wa taora kuti, aiwa, ma kore ten, mashoma, isha ipa 15. Eh, nyorai ishi, sola, kuti, sola, iwa iwa, ikiyekia imamo, nyorai kuti, eh, ma special circumstances, zajo, aga mira sei. Saka, iwa ngua, watu suggestion, kuti, atidi ma special circumstances, aga mira so, kana otakadai, nyorai, isutu ku bo, kuti ere ra, ziruka ku fuga, kuti, tishise mu mtemo. Do zananggo taora.
Thank you very much. We are discussing the Electricity Amendment Bill 2022. Your contributions will go full tilt after the news with Senzo.
Now, Pasim Papers Radio Broadcasting Division.
Umuyi preketia general, kananga, uzabiwa, ulwesilana, kama lami, Senzo Mopofu, nipanda panku ele. Umuyi, owenzu, national hero, retard preketia, EPMOKAS Walter, kananga, opupe ulwesina, uzabiwa national heroes, eka ulwesilan. Is tumbo sakets, hansi swepla, zinlaki, listo kuet, mvur, lapo ezalalapona, singa kabu ilapa, eh, harare, kuzakubale, ngonzo, ksaasa. Retard preketia general, kananga, opupe, esamzinuake, guruvi, mashwanlen central. Umkwa kelu etalele, parliamento advocate Jacob Mdena, kuti, inlala galleya, valu lenkulu lewele, wele, mele, nanjega, kulu, landela, uselu, sombuso, wele. Ekuma le, committee etalele, eh, lena mebia, ebunanga, zukulule, maniamajze, zonfige, la njalo. Pa bagetela, wele, advocate Mdena, uti, avalu lenkulu le, gu, gu majze la, omabili, gumele, vapa ta, we, guse. Mba, vapa ta, umsabense, onzibu. Okokele, bena mebia, ulusi, awitbui, uti, baza, pana ulua, zingu, kune, ngila, wanyababo, vela pa, izmabu. Inza nisuo, eh, ebunanga, zavokua, izmabu, etu bakua association zediye. Iti letembalu, kuti, se vuno, sokua, eh, sisa, uwa, ngono, umakana, ulonzi, walulunyak. Ekuma le, Senzopofu, mko keli, we, zimabu, etu bakua association, kaspamlambo. Uti ulonzi, olusle, luvele, utini, sebe so, misa, ikua, labo, ngendela, eh, ngono, ku la kade. Ikua, ngenze zlimu, esgenze, imale, nenga kulu, ya wanyamajze, ulule zni zlimu. Beguzi ndabe, kama lami, Senzopofu, libele ulalela, ogul.
Eja Fraser and Mafiki Zolo, live at the Odyssey Kaloma. February advance tickets, ordinary $15, VIP $30, available at all Eaton Leek branches and Buddhist pharmacies.
More, it's something we've promised a lot these days, but what does more actually look like? Well, in Emirates economy, it's endless entertainment on the biggest screens in the sky plus live sport. That's more, gourmet cuisine that gives you a taste of your destination, served with free-flowing drinks. That's more, special meals and toys for kids to keep your little explorers happy. That's more, so whichever way you look at it, more really does mean more in Emirates economy. Fly Emirates, fly better.
Star FM, the summer station of choice. Star FM, sounding good all the time.
Thanks to Senzo Mopofu for now indaba. We are back with the Electricity Amendment Bill. This is a public hearing. In the studio, I have the honour to host honorebo Tuuranyaray as well as honorebo Elias Musakuwa discussing the Electricity Amendment Bill. A lot of views have come through and we are still collecting your views. What should be in the bill? That is the point, that's why the parliamentarians are here, to hear from you, what should be in the bill?
Thank you for the bill, but may you also include penalties for those that are not paying their electricity bills. Because it's stealing to some extent and make the mandatory sentence to 20 years. So if you want also to contribute via our call lines as 0772 162 651 or WhatsApp number 0775 897 897. We have a caller. Hello, you are live on Star FM.
Hello.
Yes, please make your contributions. The legislators are waiting to hear from you.
Right eh 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 nyaya inaya kanakaskuru. Asi pane pa maybe ndakanga nitohwa angupika. Pane pa tauru patarwa ze importeze. Eh eh maybe I'm wrong, but I tend to be corrected. Pane pa tauru ze importeze. Eh eh bati setsheni ndagunya suta riskwet yo kontidwa zaga simba. Wos no gona ku zokra futu nyayenye monopole. For example, ekos nishi eh trukuti trukuti ore dimtiamono ti zesa endo ne klonge ti importa. Jnana oyo no Senzoma transformer. Bati there's time kuti transforma nundia oyo. Ino gara six months zesa kiti atina oyo. Saka opena that area, but it controls to other members of the to the private I mean. Individuals or or participator, but in in a more organized and controlled way. It's no gona kutibatsira. Dan kutitza ambe takanguisa that monopoly. Kuse zesa zesa yachina yosotada kutileso. Shonambashu kuti zokra masirese. I thank you.
Thank you very much for your contribution. Just a small request, if you can just give us your name and where you are calling from. We want to know the extent of the reach of the program. How diversified are the views from Zimbabweans? Is it Bindura? Is it Nyanga? Where are we getting our contributions from? This is just to know the wider reach that we are looking for. Hansi even on WhatsApp, you can just give us your location, your name. But this one ana wuzesa zitanz makorendu kona utama shoma. Da imawe zirakuska pa 20 years chaipo 10 years is little. I suggest you make them 20. The call line is 0772 162 651. Our WhatsApp number 0775 897 897. You can contribute directly to Parliament on the WhatsApp number 071 9988121. You can also send your contributions directly there. Hello, you are live on Star FM.
Hello.
Yes, your name and your location, sir.
Hello.
Tipe ozita ne kwa muruku fona muri.
Ah no.
Trukukunzwa ita ura izenyu.
Ah ndokuti you see problem here tonight umu zimbabwe.
Ndokumbira ozita ne kwa muruku fona muri.
Banana zesa the monopoly. And if you if you look at my business, banana India, there are some people there, there are some people who are good beating. Ku 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 energy ekoko. Through my private solar panel, our through my private energy resources are all great. So umu zimbabwe, we have that problem here too. You go to we to go see us and zesa ito zikada. As we as we as we are sitting right now, this is zikada.
Challenges with that connection there. 0772 162 651 requesting again that you give us your name and where you are calling from. Hello, welcome to Star FM.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, please go ahead. Your name and your location, where are you calling from?
Nigel from Harare.
Go ahead Nigel.
Okay. Number one, I think they should in the in the view, they should also punish law enforcement. Or we. Or wherever you go, they are in the person in the arrest and subsequent judgments involving people that still decables. If there is any corruption, there should be a serious decaring penalty. Number two, we should look at the protection of solar infrastructure. Because it reduces the law onto the national grid. So the vandalism and theft of this property is also rampant at the current at the moment.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much Nigel for that contribution. It is noted and the good day can the bill provide for incentives to those who report cases to motivate people to come forward and report. Hello, welcome to Star FM. Hello, can you hear me? Okay, bad connection there. 0772 162 651. If you want to be heard on the electricity amendment bill 2022. Hello, welcome to Star FM.
Hello, how are you Baba?
Yes, your name and where you are calling from, please go ahead.
Edingtons and the Sarah from Sturgis.
Okay, make your contribution, sir.
I think view it rakanaka papa. But my own point is you never would see vananos gasi kinesi zesa. Rasa ndre zesa. Zunu ziru vandalize where there is no one. Munaru va meno kwa angoba komwe ba o ba unshaita zata ni transformer. Yekasa oyo ne zuro ayenaku protect ova shko odrina ova kana uji. Try transformer ajue. And this, ta trukuti zuzu view kutanga kwajungu, gata gata zukira waxanuwe zesa. To garana opasi. Kuti jamuruki ita ijoguti mimuka duna transformer oyu. May ndakuma rest days. Oyuka transformer yeme katerema doradora. Ajumudiz no paru utangira corrupting yajiba.
Saka mtemo ita se.
Hello. Hello, Zhiel.
Eh, hansa saka mtemo ita se ipapo.
Mtemo di ipapo kanawari waxanuwe zesa vaba tuwa mtemo nufana kudi. Vowa nemtongwa wakasea na ne wangu ere kanatu kuetwa se chidechibi cha munu. Cha mukuruzira.
We are under 30 years. Hansa na Job Marako kubulawayo. This bill is really good because you find that mnotima bill wa transformer munaraunda mogara more than three months msnama gets. Somba vakana yabatuwa zamata ora kutumtongo shundu exit 10 years. Da imato weziraka na uska pa 15 years. Thank you very much for your contribution Job Marako in Bolawayo. Hello, welcome to Star FM.
Hello, Maswera.
Taswera zita ne kwa muruku fona muri. Moba matongo pindamputa ora uzamo dauti zipinde mbill.
Patrick nyau ndipa zimri pak.
Go ahead Mukoma Patrick.
Ah inindio funga kuti kungwe kwa cho kupuriki za nguero kune to akoma na vanoba vanotze na oyo ne kuba ma transformer. Kusota kwe mtoongo waka ita mudi. 15 to 20 years will be okay mukere.
Thank you Mukoma Patrick for that contribution. Ephraim Ephraim from airport Hans, I think we need more clarity on transportation. What constitutes a crime on transportation? Clarity there, maybe at end you 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 also explain on that issue. Clarity on the bill must be clear. What constitutes a crime on transportation? Okay. Thank you for the program. There's need to be clear on the jail term. Are we talking of a minimum term or maximum? The English version seems to have talked of a minimum 10 year while the Shona version talks of a maximum. Okay, I think that one was clarified. Hansi. They should make a thorough investigation also those who are working with the company because they are the ones trained for that. That's those are some of the views that are coming through. Hello, welcome to Star FM.
Hello.
Yes, zita ne kwa muruku fona muri. Your name and where you are calling from?
Give us inka parua. It is ina tingi wa no karezi wa wakawa. Who is young generic. Is I look my generic in university. We are being jobless, why? Because my company is no wataanga change people. Ah wuxia yana energy kucha employee wa no ah na kangoa zangua tika wusu wanga gara. So he's being employer all those people are going to have one two or three because of that electricity. So I think umu na ninga waniwa sizin zaga zizi. Ah. It's on the collect and maybe he is in the past and that's the only problem. Okay. And if this all we we is zawa do fukira. Eh eh panikia kuti maybe sabirwa tambo electricity para pamba. And he says this is if my fault. He said, I go back to what he put that to an. He was zizoo. He's in no wa anelewa zizon kona wa di. Ah di topuwa zizi. Putis katabi wezuzi. He's not my fault. Dupona nyitokwa abuwa zee pati. Ah no ti zin topu. And you to protect her as she. It's on no kameo ne koga zasi mbavazi. Aywa kendi zela pa.
Thank you Kurua Oko, please keep listening. Thank you for that contribution. Hello, thank you for the program. Why is there no credit to those who use solar? They should not be able to govern solar users because they save electricity. In fact, they should be paid for generating extra energy. Thank you very much Evans in Harare for that contribution. Hello, you are live on Star FM.
Hello, Maswera.
Taswera Maswera ozita ne contribution nyanyu ne kwa mnova.
I don't know. Don't you umkaru marare. Eh contribution nyangje kuti the moment yada kunya kuingriza the number of years. You know, but I talk to him. She one of my offenders, what did you tell this or ano benefactor my law enforcement? The moment mtemo pono wa that person. It became the locality for one to break my lawyers, my my law enforcement. So I think there's need of taking a balance on that one. So. I would say five. Five years is 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 appropriate measure. Number two, on the issues, I think by my legislators. What name of ones who are good. What is the work of us who think about with regards to issue. But my when my communities are paying for my my transformers, when they are paying for my my cables on their own. So I think I'm not sure if this is the act that is going to deal with it. But I think there's need of clarity there with who or when the transformers and the and everything has been the infrastructure has been brought by the by the by the community. And more so what I would want also is it not okay for for maybe having Zesa infrastructure being protected by state security? I think this is a strategic resource that have to be protected. So I think the Zesa should have arrangement with the state security agencies where their infrastructure is protected. So that it doesn't affect the community and the economy. More so, it's a suggestion, I would think there is need of opening up on the issue of Zesa supply. Let's have a law enforcement, let's have an act that encourages private players to come in to feed in in the national grid, the electricity. Let's open up, let's not have a lot of capital requirements that might be required to have private players come in. We should have an arrangement like in other countries where private player players are being paid by Zesa to supply. My gates go to national grids. I want to end here.
Thank you very much for that contribution. I will ask the legislators to intervene during the course. You want to come in now to just clear some of the messages before we take another round?
Yeah, I think we can just clarify on a number of issues. Recommendations actually. Where one listener is saying that communities paying for transformers and cabling need to be protected. Maybe they have to clarify how the law should be amended to to accommodate their private infrastructure which they have supplied to to Zesa. Whether they want special consideration for this, we should be made law. Because here we are amending law. They, a lot of people are saying that it will benefit law enforcement agencies if we have stiffer penalties. They must also suggest alternatives so that we also strike a balance between that to avoid corruption or to propose. How the law, the same bill can deal with law enforcement agencies who are then caught in an attempt to to subvert justice or to abort justice or to aid criminal activity. So we encourage people also to 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 recommend on how situations like that should be dealt with at law. I think that's what I can comment for now. I don't know if honourable Chura has anything to add on that.
Masu ita ndingango dokora zume cheteso kuti. Trukutarisira kuti muri esimba wu itipe ufungwa zaya utzukuti. Wano daguti mtemo ui chwe se. Mtemo unzigudi pa musorope wano, wanengo alukubadari samari. Zekuti enga nyango matanda kanya kanakuisa magesi pa zimba. Muru daguti mtemo wacho unzigudi. Tipe ifungwa zenyu. Kanamati pa fungwa zenyu. Ndime muno gazira mtemo. Shunuti basira kuso gazira mtemo wacho te se pa wacheti.
George, just to add, pardon my funza footi kuti eh kuoka na basaranguriri kunko takura zinu. Ndi kichi takura zisi nama paper. Mtemo uruku ti kana wata kurasiru zema gates. Make sure kuti zine mapa. Kana zisi nama paper unosungwa. Saka imichita ura eguti aywa chinja i visa ipapo kana tutu asai. Asipu ni ngirigini mtemo uruku propose kawi. Uruku tawo tikanawa one kwa one waka takura transformer. Wakata kurama simbiti no takura magesi rujinji eh unosungwa. Saka imi uji propose eguti aywa masati sunga ere kana tumeta se. Asino mtemo uriponu saka tawaya ozonzo wafungwa zenyu. Asesu ziru ku propose wamtemo nese kuti. Kana waba tuwa une zunisoso. We the ori driver kana utuori ti ziri motamako. Zirikuwa u zirukuruzi rodi iwe we funza muri zwe. Akuti takura wajukuti mdone mape bajo. Wajute ngakupi zirukue ndakupi. U one mape u gutika ne usato wazitakura motamako.
Thank you to our honourables, Mutsaku and Chura. Your calls please on 0772 162 651. You are live on Star FM.
Hello.
Yes, your name and your location and your contribution, sir.
Eric Chikandira from West is alive. Vanu akada isowakafano wano re power nawari underage. Kutuwa disadvantage ya ko upeni wa wes. Kuno wano wano raga mane misionka ino damagid. Wanengi wa wakura saka trukuti 15 years. It's a zezo takanaka. That is.
Not ten as Kurua Hans, the amendment should also penalize Zesa officials who demand residents to contribute replacements of damaged or stolen infrastructure. Zesa officials appear to be taking advantage of people's desperation when there is an elongated fault. Hello, you are live on Star FM.
Hello, you are live on Star FM. Hello, you are live on Star.
Hello.
Yes, your name and your location?
My name is Tendai, I'm calling from Tinaw.
Please go ahead.
Yes, I think if you pay for a transformer or for cabling, which becomes Zesa property. Zesa should compensate you for that. Very important size that if you store a transformer, it is a business. And if you need to move to another location, maybe a farmer or a business basically, we can take you home. That is my contribution.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Squabaila from Cold Come For Tarare. My contribution is the sentences are too small. It should be minimum of 15 years. There should be no special circumstances in this bill as this will create loopholes. Hello, welcome to Star FM.
Hi, good evening.
Your name and your location, sir, and make your contribution?
Okay, I'm calling from Harare. Um yeah, my name is Tawanda. Now, in in terms in terms of these laws, can we just make sure that they are not paid? Because I had the gentleman talking about material being found in the car and so forth. Because we have got some very ambiguous and overzealous enforceurs. Who can end up misinterpreting that law. So that even if you're transporting a generator, you go through all sorts of things just to move it. I know he's talking about ivaulting stuff and so forth. But it's always ambiguity with these laws and his punishments. Which then just makes the whole thing a little bit ridiculous. So I think if they can just make sure they are very precise with what is exactly they trying to control.
Thank you very much for that contribution from Glanora Mukuzey. Good evening, I think the act should specify the extent to which it becomes illegal to transmit power from point A to point B. For example, will it become illegal to transmit power from my main house to the cottage or my foul run? Thank you Mukuzey Glanora for that contribution. Okay, this one is a gripe with Zesa. My name is Brian Elijah Chitzike Water for Zarar. I think we are inundated with faults almost daily basis. The problem is Zesa doesn't communicate with us. And yeah, that's a that we wanted more to do with the electricity amendment bill contribution. But this is this is a community. A customer was not happy with Zesa there. Then phone number to call is 0772 162 651. Welcome to Star FM.
Harare.
Yes, please, your name and where you are calling us from?
Ah, John David. Ah, ini da ndriku. Da ndriku onase kuti ga.
Yes, trukukunzwa ita ura izenyu.
Alright, da ndriku ti neni. Eh mtemo uruku propose wakuti we we mtemo. Je eses saka nakaka eh asipaku na kwa jaka ita inda likifu zirakuti. Hello, fandawu zengepati setwa ino the law enforcement. Ne kuti tiga tari sa kuti IGG ku vandalize wa kuse kuki kama property eses. Wano acho adisuku zonzo wajukusungwa kwa oisus. We easy susutine example emchi nda we kupfura muno wano kuweta. Ana u butora uka kanga to bat. Saka ndriku ti base self choking. It's susutirukuta da tirukuta da party kubata wano oba asungwa oba chatwa nemi mtemo yachi nenge yiri koyacho. So that one wano so ucha ku vandalize ma ma property eh eses. I I think that's my contribution kuti. Saka jato zatlinge that ndo wamtemo. Let's let's enforce that that mtemo yowo. So that one wache kubata ma. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our time is running out. Just a reminder, on on Wednesday, 8th of February 2023, 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. Parliament will hold a Zoom virtual hearing. If I I will just get the numbers where where they can access the the codes so that they can also contribute. I will give you shortly the the exact codes where you can access them. Honourables, our time seems to be running away. We have the contributions on WhatsApp. We are going to harvest them and forward them to Parliament so that they also make up a part of the contributions that have come from our listeners. But if we can just have one last corner, one last lucky caller. Hello, you are live on Star FM. Hello, you are live on Star FM. Okay. Honourables, if we can just wind up our public hearing and the way forward. And if there are any clarity issues that need to be clarified, you can go ahead. I'll start with you, honourable Musaku.
Thank you, George. I've heard a number of listeners saying that connections from main house to cottage are illegal or what? I think what the act is talking about is whereby you get electricity and you don't pay. As long as you are getting subverting electricity from a legal source. And you are paying, it's it's all going through the meter. I don't see criminality there. But the moment you start getting power pre meter and you are avoiding payment, that becomes criminal.
Honourable.
Masu ita trukuti. Nuwese muni ke esimba wu ingati we imapurisa. Ano tarisa ne kuchengeke za naranza za tikeri. Kunya nyanya nyapa juwakwa juema geti. Uka onao kana kutarisa. Ona muna ripu pa mshika pa transformer. Usirukumu ziwa. To chengeke za wakomi za wakomanga. Ngarangoa eripu kuti chengeke za zinuzelu.
For those who want to contribute on the Zoom virtual hearing on Wednesday, please get in touch with Makunike on 0782 940 527. 0782 940 527, that's Makunike. They will give you the codes. Also, you can get in touch with Ndawu on 0774 546 215. That's Ndawu. You can also get to contribute on Wednesday over the Zoom virtual hearing. That is 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. For now, our time has run out and we are wait the next program. My name is George Msumba and we were discussing, we were having a public hearing on the electricity amendment bill 2022. We hope that you keep listening to Star FM and we will update you if we have other public hearings. But for now, it's a good night and keep listening to Star FM.